Thank you, President Iraq wishes to express its firm condemnation of the massacres and attacks in Al Fashr and Sudan, as well as the suffering, the human suffering and the innocent victims. Iraq deplores all attempts to destabilize the Sudanese state and to attack the rule of law in that country. We warn of attacks that seek to bring political or geographic division of the country. Our country would like to express its support to Sudan, that they adopt dialogue as a solution to the conflict and to reach peace. We expose our support for this approach of dialogue, national dialogue, aiming to put an end to political instability for the people of Sudan. We fear that ongoing conflict can only bring increased victims among civilians, particularly women and children, the elderly and others that find themselves among the most vulnerable, as well as the destruction of infrastructure necessary for life of the Sudanese people, a sister nation. This exposes them to long-term damages that threaten peace and stability. We call upon the international community to support the transition process, to respect their sovereignty and territorial integrity and non-interference in its domestic affairs, and to respect the choices of its people. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Malta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Malta aligns itself with the statement by the EU. We deplore the severe human rights violations in Al Fashr, which have exacerbated following the RSF offensive. Malta condemns all attacks on civilian populations, humanitarian personnel, and critical infrastructure. The use of sexual and gender-based violence is abhorrent and must cease immediately. Malta is particularly and deeply concerned by reports of such violence against women and girls. We underline that all parties to the conflict must abide by their obligations under international law. In this regard, we thank the High Commissioner and his office for their continued attention to this tragic situation and for the direct appeals of 27th and 31st October, reminding RSF commanders of their obligations under international humanitarian law to ensure the protection of civilians and to ensure the passage of essential supplies and humanitarian assistance. Malta’s support to the fact-finding mission and special procedures and their work is maintained unreservedly. We call upon all parties to the conflict to seize all hostilities and violations of international humanitarian law and to hold perpetrators accountable for their actions. We take note of the recently signaled claim of openness to a humanitarian truce proposal put forward by quadinterlocutors and reiterate the priority for the parties to resume talks for a lasting ceasefire and a comprehensive, inclusive, and Sudanese-owned political process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of the Republic of Moldova.
Mr. President, the Republic of Moldova is deeply concerned with the ongoing conflict in Sudan and the escalation in and around Al Fashr. The capture by the Rapid Support Forces of the city of Al Fashr further deepened the grave situation. We are appalled by the reported violations such as summary executions, ethnically motivated violence, sexual and gender-based violence, including against children. The famine of those trapped inside the city and attacks on humanitarian and medical personnel are of deep concern. We strongly condemn all the violations of the humanitarian law and of human rights. The conflict has already caused mass forced displacement, with over seven million people internally displaced and over four million people fleeing to neighboring countries. While we welcome previous efforts aimed at resolving the conflict, we regret that a lasting political solution has not been reached yet. We call on the parties to agree on an immediate and sustainable ceasefire and ensure the peaceful resolution of the conflict, with full respect to the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Sudan. We appeal to the parties to ensure rapid and unhindered access for humanitarian aid. Accountability must be ensured for the violations committed by all the parties. In this regard, we support the mandate of the fact-finding mission and the draft resolution calling for the urgent inquiry into the recent violations. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Portugal.
Mr. President, Portugal aligns with the EU statement. Portugal firmly condemns the actions taken by the Rapid Support Forces in and around Al Fashr and the serious violations and abuses of human rights perpetrated against civilians. The humanitarian situation in Sudan is catastrophic. Roughly one-third of the population is displaced, with nearly ten million internally displaced, and famine conditions have been widely verified. Reports from UN and humanitarian partners about the situation in and around Al Fashr detail ethnically targeted attacks, conflict-related sexual violence, torture, summary executions, and abductions. Portugal calls upon all parties to cease hostilities, to comply with international humanitarian and human rights law, and to ensure unhindered humanitarian access, the safe and unimpeded movement of civilians fleeing Al Fashr to nearby locations, as well as full protection for humanitarian and medical personnel. Respect for international humanitarian law, international human rights law is not negotiable, and accountability must be ensured. Portugal fully supports UN and regional accountability mechanisms and calls for full cooperation with them, guaranteeing access, enabling prompt information sharing, and ensuring robust protection for victims and witnesses. Portugal reiterates the need for an immediate permanent ceasefire and urges all parties to engage in inclusive, good faith, and constructive negotiations to that end. Thank you, President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of New Zealand.
Mr. President, the human rights situation in Sudan is catastrophic. New Zealand supports the convening of this special session and the ongoing work of the Sudan Fact-Finding Mission. New Zealand unequivocally condemns the continued violence against civilians, including the recent atrocities committed in Al Fashr. Sudan remains the world’s worst humanitarian crisis. At least thirteen million people are displaced, tens, if not hundreds of thousands killed, and millions face acute food insecurity, including famine. Mass killings, large-scale sexual violence and rape, including against children, and recruitment of children by the parties constitute war crimes and crimes against humanity under international law. Reports of such acts are appalling. New Zealand continues to urge all parties to the conflict, including external actors, to negotiate an immediate ceasefire and for all parties to uphold their obligations under international humanitarian law, including the protection of civilians. Humanitarian organizations must be granted safe, rapid, and unimpeded access throughout Sudan. Human rights violations and abuses must stop. Mr. President, Secretary General Guterres has said the situation in Sudan is spiraling out of control. The international community must come together to support a negotiated humanitarian pause and a permanent ceasefire in Sudan and ensure that the human rights of the Sudanese people are upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of the State of Palestine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The State of Palestine expresses its full solidarity with the brotherly Sudanese people, especially in light of the deep humanitarian crisis due to the escalation of armed conflict, namely in and around Al Fashr. We are following with deep concern the credible reports about serious violations of international humanitarian law, international law of human rights, as well as targeting civilians and civilian infrastructure, including medical and health facilities and humanitarian facilities, which aggravates the humanitarian crisis and increases the suffering of the innocent civilians. We reiterate our steadfast position to protect and promote human rights in all conditions and an immediate and comprehensive cessation of hostilities, as well as securing humanitarian access to those who are in need of it, as well as protecting principles of neutrality, humanity, and non-discrimination and providing assistance. We call upon the international community to double efforts in order to protect civilians, to support initiatives aiming at a comprehensive political settlement that will end the suffering of the Sudanese people, preserve Sudan’s unity and territorial integrity, and fulfills the aspiration of its people to live in peace, security, and stability. We reiterate our full solidarity with Sudan, and we confirm that protection of civilians and preserving human rights should be at the heart of all international response to the current crisis. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Andorra.
Andorra joins the deep concern expressed by this council in the face of the human tragedy unfolding in Al Fashr and throughout Dafur. Reports of ethnically motivated massacres, the systematic use of sexual violence, forced displacement, famine, and the inability of thousands of civilians to flee the city are unacceptable. No cause can ever justify the denial on the right to life, dignity, and security of civilians. Andorra is among the states that requested the convening of this special session, convinced that the situation in Sudan described by the United Nations as the world’s worst humanitarian and displacement crisis required the council’s urgent and resolute attention. This initiative reflects our commitment to place diplomacy and dialogue at the service of the protection of civilians and human rights, and to ensure that indifference does not paralyze international action. We firmly condemn the atrocities committed and call on all parties to immediately cease hostilities and to respect international humanitarian law and human rights. Humanitarian access must be granted without hindrance, and the safety of humanitarian workers must be ensured. Andorra reaffirms its support for the mandate of the International Fact-Finding Mission and stresses the need for accountability for all violations committed. There can be no lasting peace without justice. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Zimbabwe.
Mr. President, Zimbabwe is appalled by the humanitarian catastrophe in Al Fashr, not Dafur. We condemn the criminal activities against the Sudanese civilians and the grave violations of human rights and international humanitarian law perpetrated by the Rapid Support Forces. We also condemn all forms of external interference that continue to exacerbate the Sudanese conflict in direct violation of the EU and the UN Security Council resolutions. We stand in solidarity with the people of Al Fashr, who have suffered since 2024, being denied access to food and other social basic needs, thus violating their human rights and international humanitarian law. We add our voice to the calls for the cessation of all hostilities and the opening of a humanitarian corridor to allow lifesaving aid to reach affected populations. Zimbabwe concers with the position that there is no military solution to this crisis. We support the strengthening of Sudan’s political transition and urge all parties to commit to a peaceful and inclusive political process. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Mauritania.
Thank you, President. Mauritania associates itself for the statement made on behalf of the Arab Group and the International Islamic Cooperation Organization. We would like to note the dramatic humanitarian situation and human rights situation. We condemn with the greatest strength the attacks against civilians, to include women and children, as well as the attacks on the Saudi maternity hospital. We want, we call for those responsible for this to be brought to justice. Mauritania expresses full solidarity with the sister people of Sudan. We support the humanitarian efforts underway, and we call upon the international community to strengthen its assistance in order to ensure safe and unhindered access to humanitarian support and assistance. Mauritania reiterates its support for territorial integrity and sovereignty of Sudan. We have, we call for an inclusive and peaceful resolution based on a Sudan-led process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Tunisia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tunisia expresses its deep concern regarding the deteriorating humanitarian and security situation in Al Fashr. This is a direct threat to basic human rights for civilians, and this undermines all chances of reaching a political agreement and achieving peace and security in Sudan. My country expresses its continued solidarity with the brotherly people of Sudan, and we reiterate our commitment to preserving and safeguarding Sudan’s integrity, sovereignty, and non-interference in its internal affairs. We are deeply committed to human rights principles, and we support the Human Rights Council principles in terms of accountability. There is a need to take decisive measures to respect the human rights of all civilians in Al Fashr and all over Sudan. We consider that the current situation calls for working on an immediate ceasefire and urgent truce in order to facilitate humanitarian access to those who deserve it and fulfill the terms of the Jeddah Agreement to protect civilians. We call upon the international community, Human Rights Council, to redouble their efforts in order to find a solution to human rights violation in Sudan, as well finding an environment that is conducive for preserving the human rights and dignity of all Sudanese. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Croatia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Croatia aligns itself with the EU statement. Croatia is gravely concerned about the ongoing war in Sudan and appalled by the reports of atrocities committed recently in Al Fashr by the Rapid Support Forces, targeting civilians, including ethnically motivated violence and killings, conflict-related sexual violence, and starvation. We call for the immediate stop of all violations and call all parties to the conflict to respect their obligations under international humanitarian law. Equally important, we call all external actors to immediately cease their support to the warring parties and to comply with the UN embargo. Their responsibility to ending the conflict is significant. Croatia urges all parties to the conflict and international actors to engage constructively in ceasefire negotiations, enabling humanitarian access, and setting the preconditions for peace. Abroad and inclusive Sudanese-owned political process, with civilian structures having central role in the process, is crucial for achieving life and peace and dignity for people of Sudan and for the future of Sudan. The fight against impunity and ensuring accountability for all violations of international law are the basis for the establishment of lasting peace. Croatia supports the work of the Fact-Finding Mission of Sudan and investigations carried out by the ICC in this regard. We reiterate our support to the sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to UNFPA.
Thank you, President. UNFPA is alarmed by the catastrophic human rights humanitarian situation in and around Al Fashr, which demands immediate collective action. This is a full-scale protection crisis and a gendered assault on the human rights, safety, and dignity of women and girls, fueled by unashamed impunity. The use of rape is a deliberate tactic of war to displace, terrorize, and destroy entire communities. The intentional targeting of health personnel and facilities, including the massacre at the Al Fashr maternity hospital, has obliterated access to essential care. In many areas, poor rape treatment supplies are unavailable due to access obstructions, denying survivors lifesaving care. UNFPA continues to sustain maternal health services in North Dafur and Northern State, where there are an estimated fifty-two thousand pregnant women, but needs are overwhelming. Reproductive health kits are prepositioned, but we need safe, unhindered access to ensure supplies reach to those in need. We urge the council to act decisively, demanding immediate, unconditional, and safe humanitarian access, ensuring strong support for accountability mechanisms for grave violations, especially conflict-related sexual violence, and mobilizing funding for humanitarian response that places the protection of women and girls at its center. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to UNHCR.
UNHCR is deeply concerned at the horrific situation facing hundreds of thousands of civilians who remain in Al Fashr, as well as those who are trying to flee the city in the face of life-threatening risks. The escalation of violence in Al Fashr includes brutal attacks against civilians, including internally displaced persons. Extrajudicial killings, arbitrary detention, enforced disappearances, sexual violence, family separation, extortion and looting are taking place indiscriminately in Al Fashr and as people try to flee to safety. There are no safe ways out of the city due to the presence of criminal gangs and RSF affiliates who control the routes. The scale of the horrors being reported is staggering. In North Cordofan, indiscriminate shelling and airstrikes continue alongside rampant human rights violations. Humanitarian access risks being completely blocked in Al Beid, Kadghuli, and Dilling, preventing humanitarian actors and partners from responding to besieged population’s dire needs. The killings of humanitarian personnel in Al Fashr and Cordofan flagrantly violates international law, and attacks on health facilities and destruction of water installations are depriving desperate civilians of lifesaving assistance. UNHCR adds its voice to widespread calls for an immediate ceasefire, respect for international law, safe passage, unhindered humanitarian access, and the protection of all civilians in Sudan. People displaced within the country, as well as refugees who have fled Sudan.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Rwanda.
Mr. President.
After microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rwanda thanks the council for convening this special session and aligns itself with the Africa Group. We express our concern over the continued suffering of civilians, the destruction of livelihood, and worsening humanitarian conditions. The protection of civilians must remain paramount. Rwanda underscores the central role of the African Union and EGRD, with the support of the United Nations, the League of Arab States, and other partners in advancing coordinated international response consistent with the EU roadmap for the resolution of the Sudan crisis. Sustainable peace can only be achieved through inclusive Africa-led dialogue and political processes that address root causes of the conflict and lay foundations for national reconciliation and stability. The government of Sudan bears the primary responsibility to protect its population from mass atrocities, while the international community must continue to support national, regional, and local efforts to prevent further violations and alleviate human suffering in line with the responsibility to protect principles. As I conclude, Rwanda calls for an immediate cessation of hostilities, respect for humanitarian ceasefire, and renewed commitment to peace and dialogue to bring relief and hope to the people of Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Islamic Republic of Iran expresses its profound concern over the escalating human rights and humanitarian situation in and around Al Fashr amid the ongoing conflict in Sudan. The severe famine, massive displacement, and widespread civilian suffering constitute one of the gravest humanitarian crises globally, demanding urgent attention. We deeply regret the persistent silence and lack of decisive action, which has worsened the crisis and reflects troubling double standards. Of particular concern is the continued failure to effectively prevent the transfer of arms contributing to these grave atrocities. Foreign interventions, including arms supplies and mercenary recruitment, fuel conflicts, and deepen humanitarian crisis. Iran emphasizes the necessity of respecting the territorial integrity of Sudan. Iran strongly rejects any attempt to impose a situation of dual governance or to weaken the central authority of the legitimate government of Sudan. We call on all member states to act decisively, protect civilians, and support lasting peace and unity in Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Lebanon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lebanon strongly condemns the latest escalation in and around Al Fashr and the bloody events that led to serious violations of human rights and to the international humanitarian law, as well as the acts of killing, starvation, destruction, and all forms of violence and forced displacement and targeting of medical infrastructure and humanitarian teams. Lebanon joins calls for an immediate cessation of hostilities and ending the suffering of the civilians, as well as securing humanitarian access. We reiterate the importance of accountability for all violations and crimes in order to end impunity and to achieve justice for the victims of this painful conflict. Lebanon calls for intensifying efforts at the regional and international levels to find an inclusive political solution for the crisis in Sudan through an inclusive national dialogue that will safeguard Sudan’s sovereignty, security, and stability, as well as its brotherly people’s dignity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Angola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Angola remains deeply concerned by the ongoing violence and the deteriorating humanitarian and human rights situation across Sudan, and especially in Al Fashr. Angola firmly condemns the atrocities committed against civilians, including attacks on hospitals and humanitarian workers. Such acts constitute grave violations of international humanitarian law and of this council’s resolutions. Angola is committed to a peaceful Africa with strong institutions. In this regard, as chair of the African Union Peace and Security Council, Angola reiterates its commitment to African-led solutions, and we express our firm belief that peace can only be achieved through inclusive dialogue and negotiations supported by the United Nations, the African Union, and regional partners. The protection of civilians and humanitarian workers must remain a priority. Angola reaffirms its commitment to sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of Sudan. President Jean-Louis Lourdes, who was president pro tempore of the African Union, has made the situation of Sudan a priority and will continue to promote dialogue, reconciliation, and peace. The time has come to silence the guns and to give hope back to the Sudanese people. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative Oman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We follow with great interest the humanitarian and security developments in Al Fashr and the brotherly republic of the Sudan. We condemn the killings and violations against civilians, and we hope that the outcome of this session will help meet the aspirations of the Sudanese people in strengthening the stability and unity of the Sudan. We stress the importance of giving precedence to dialogue and peaceful solutions, ensuring the protection of civilians and facilitating unhindered humanitarian access under principles of IHL irrelevance and resolutions. We also underscore the need to respect the sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of the Sudan. We call on all parties to de-escalate on the ground and to engage meaningfully in a comprehensive political process conducive to the achievement of lasting security and stability. We support regional and international efforts to create an environment conducive to dialogue in the interest of the Sudan and its people. We call on the international community to intensify humanitarian assistance and coordinate efforts to ensure that it reaches the affected people in Al Fashr and in other affected areas to ease the suffering and to build sustainable stability. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Yemen.
Thank you, Mr. President. We join the statement of the groups we belong to. We express deep concern at the deteriorating, appalling humanitarian situation in and around Al Fashr after the takeover of the RSF of this city. Civilians face excessive violence, forced displacement, and increasing suffering due to the lack of food, water, and basic services. My country reaffirms its full solidarity with the brotherly republic of the Sudan, and we stress once again the importance of respecting sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of the Sudan, and the need to abide by the principles of IHL and protecting civilians without discrimination. We renew our support for all Arab regional and international efforts aimed at achieving security and stability in the brotherly Sudan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of the United Republic of Tanzania.
Thank you, Mr. President. The United Republic of Tanzania aligns with the statement made on behalf of the African Group. We notwithstanding the recent events in Al Fashr, North Dafur, Sudan, we continue to reaffirm the enduring principles of the Charter of the United Nations, respect for sovereignty, territorial integrity, and the peaceful settlement of disputes. In this regard, we call upon all concerned parties to embrace dialogue and peaceful political process based on the EU roadmap for the resolution of the Sudan crisis, and with the support of all interested partners. We further urge the international community to strengthen cooperation and provide the necessary support, including humanitarian support, to Sudan. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Italy.
Mr. President, joining the EU statement, Italy condemns in the strongest terms the appalling deterioration of the human rights and humanitarian situation in Sudan, further exacerbated following the fall of Al Fashr into the hands of the RSF militia. We are particularly alarmed by reports of widespread execution of civilians, sexual violence against women and girls, ethnically motivated violence, looting, and deliberate destruction of hospitals and other essential infrastructures. As a result of the war, the people of Sudan continue to face the world's most severe humanitarian displacement crisis. More than 10 million people have been forced to flee their homes. However, half of the population is experiencing acute food insecurity. As recalled by the Italian Deputy Prime Minister, Tajani Itali is at the forefront of humanitarian assistance, supporting the most vulnerable civilians, starting with children, by allocating over 125 million euros to strengthen basic services and assist Sudanese communities in neighbouring countries. Those most vulnerable have suffered the atrocity that may amount to war crimes and crimes against humanity. All parties must take immediate measures to safeguard civilians in full compliance with the international humanitarian human rights law. Italy calls for an immediate end to hostilities and for all parties to respect their obligation under international law, including by guaranteeing safe and unhindered access to humanitarian and health aid. We continue to stand next to the Sudanese people and support its aspiration for a peaceful and democratic future with respect for human rights and the role of role on its core.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of Libya.
Thank you, Mr. President. We join the statements of the groups we belong to and we express grave concern and full condemnation of violations against civilians in Al Fashr, including targeting the Saudi hospital which led to the fall of victims and medical staff. Accountability should be ensured. We also welcome international and regional efforts to reach a humanitarian truce as a first step towards a permanent ceasefire and ending this conflict. Mr. President, the Sudanese people have suffered too much and civilians pay the price for this conflict and we call upon the international community to redouble efforts to ensure a ceasefire and to ensure unhindered humanitarian access. My country continues to provide support to our brothers in the Sudan who came to Libya. We stress the unity of the Sudan, rejecting any interference in its internal affairs and preserving its legitimate institutions. We want to have a Sudanese-led political process with a unified government. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Holy See.
She has received great concern the tragic news coming from Sudan, particularly from the city of Al Fashr in the war-torn region of North Darfur. Just a few days ago, Pope Leo XIV recalled that indiscriminate violence against women and children, attacks on unarmed civilians and serious obstacles to humanitarian aid are causing unbearable suffering for a population already exhausted by long months of conflict. My delegation wishes to highlight the following specific concerns. Catholic-run clinics, schools and community centers in conflict zones have either been forced to close or are operating under extreme duress. Their staff, many of whom are volunteers, face daily threats and many have been displaced. Catholic institutions in Sudan and neighbouring countries, including South Sudan, are providing critical support to displaced families, often without formal recognition or adequate funding. The moral voice and community reach of the local Catholic clergy and their networks are invaluable. However, it is not supported enough. In order to bring an end to the current levels of violence, Sudan requires both sustained humanitarian aid and immediate diplomatic efforts. Therefore, my delegation echoes the heartfelt appeal of Pope Leo XIV, urging all parties to consent to a ceasefire and the cessation of hostilities and urgently open humanitarian corridors. The international community must act with determination and generosity to provide assistance and support to those working tirelessly, to provide relief to the suffering population. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I give the floor to distinguished representative of South Sudan.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity. South Sudan welcomes this special session on the situation in Al Fashr and aligns with the African statement. We are concerned with the situation in Al Fashr and encourage both sides to the conflict, to one, engage in dialogue to end the crisis and suffering of civilians; two, uphold international humanitarian law and human rights law and immediate cessation of hostilities to prevent further displacement. We encourage unhindered access to humanitarian assistance. Mr. President, since peace in Sudan means peace in South Sudan, we therefore express solidarity with Sudan and urge that all efforts aimed at ending the situation in the Sudan should be done without interference but due respect to Sudan's unity, sovereignty and territorial integrity. We thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We will now move to the list of speakers for non-governmental organizations and I give the floor to the Cairo Institute.
By virtue of Al Fashr are enduring an unspeakable horror. Systematic campaign of extermination marked by ethically targeted massacres, widespread sexual violence, arbitrary detentions, unenforced disappearances following prolonged starvation, relentless extrajudicial killings, drone attacks and shelling. Tragically similar siege are now mirrored in Al Obaid, Kadugli, Babanusa and Adalang, threatening the same catastrophic consequences. Rapid support forces continue to engage in large-scale looting, while armed forces carry out indiscriminate aerial bombardments and politically motivated trials. This council must act decisively. Our organizations call for an immediate comprehensive and verifiable ceasefire, safe and unhindered humanitarian access to all affected areas and an end to all attacks on civilians and civilian infrastructure. This council must request a specific report by the Sudan Fact-Finding Mission of Al Fashr, ensure that the mission is provided adequate resources to collect and preserve evidence in support of accountability and to communicate its findings to the ICC and other relevant bodies. Finally, RSF leaders and their regional enablers must be held accountable to their complicity in atrocities and Sudanese victims and survivors must remain at the heart of this session's deliberations.
Thank you. I give the floor to Article 19.
Article 19 is horrified by the new wave of unspeakable atrocities in Sudan which could amount to war crimes and crimes against humanity. We welcome the Human Rights Council taking action through this special session to help end the catastrophic suffering and ensure those responsible face accountability. Sudan cannot be allowed to become a forgotten war again. In times of conflict, journalists and media workers play a vital role in documenting and reporting on war crimes and other human rights violations and sharing lifesaving information. Yet, in Sudan, we are witnessing an onslaught on the media. At least 15 journalists have been killed since the start of the war, with reports of many others being detained or going missing. Currently, 90% of media institutions have halted their operations. The targeting of journalists constitutes a war crime. This has been exacerbated by the SAF and the RSF destroying telecommunications infrastructure and weaponizing internet shutdowns and other blackouts, further allowing atrocities to happen in darkness. These actions interrupt information flows, cut civilians off from vital communication and impede the delivery of humanitarian aid amid growing malnutrition and starvation. Some of the last remaining sources of information have come from the RSF itself, which has been using the online networks it controls to spread praise and propaganda, broadcasting and celebrating the war crimes committed by its soldiers. We call for an immediate ceasefire and the extension of the arms embargo. We encourage the Fact-Finding Mission and the ICC to specifically consider how the information war in Sudan exacerbates harm to civilians, obstructs vital documentation of gross human rights and humanitarian law violations and contributes to the commission of crimes. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Association for Women's Rights in Development.
Mr. President, I make this statement on behalf of the Strategic Initiative for Women in the Horn of Africa, SIHA Network. SIHA remains appalled by the Rapid Support Forces, RFS, continuing campaign of genocide, ethnic targeting of indigenous African population in North Darfur as a whole through execution, abduction, displacement and death. This includes the perpetration of deep systematic sexual violence against women and girls in Al Fashr. Since the fall of Al Fashr in October 26, SIHA continues to gather survivor testimonies and mounting evidence of these atrocities. As of November 7, SIHA has verified detailed cases of widespread rape committed by the RSF against women and girls fleeing Al Fashr, exposing a pattern of murder, rape, physical assault, abduction and forced disappearance and looting. Families have been forcibly separated, with men and boys beaten, executed or taken to nearby detention sites. Women and girls are singled out for rape and sexual violence, often in front of their own children or parents. Personal property has been confiscated or destroyed in enormous numbers. Survivors are forced to follow orders under death threats, enduring profound humiliation, torture and extreme deprivation, with children suffering from acute hunger, thirst and illness. This genocide is a continuation and intensification of the RFS' two-decade campaign of extermination against indigenous African communities in Darfur. We call on this council to move beyond statements, establish an independent investigative mechanism for Darfur, impose targeted sanctions and ensure immediate humanitarian access. The world must not look away. Every moment of inaction is a choice, one that sides with the perpetrator.
Thank you. I give the floor to Matt for Peace Development and Human Rights Association.
Thank you, Mr. President. In Al Fashr, all values are compromised, all rights violated. The criminals and those who finance and support them are well-known. The military logistical financial support provided by the UAE to the RSF has left behind the worst humanitarian crisis in terms of the number of massacres of civilians, the indiscriminate killing of women and children, extrajudicial executions and the use of weapons prohibited under IHL. Mr. President, the RSF killed 460 people at once during the attack on the Saudi maternity hospital in Al Fashr. Nearly 30 women were also gang raped in a camp for the displaced people near Al Fashr University. The UAE is still establishing an open air bridge through Chad, Libya and Somalia, through which it provides support to the RSF, including drones, heavy artillery, small and medium weapons, tankers, carriers and mercenaries from Colombia and the Sahel region. Mr. President, the war in Sudan will only stop if the UAE stops its military logistical and financial support for the RSF. Also imposing sanctions on those involved in transferring mercenaries to the RSF is essential. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Human Rights Watch, please.
Mr. President, we welcome this convening and thank the panelists for their stark reporting on atrocities unfolding in and around Al Fashr. Human Rights Watch has analyzed videos filmed by the RSF showing their fighters celebrating over dead people, executing apparent civilians, including injured people. In one, an RSF soldier executes an older man in civilian clothes inside a faculty of medicine in a room already littered with bodies. The horror of abuses in Al Fashr is tragically familiar. The RSF has committed crimes against humanity and war crimes throughout the current conflict. The High Commissioner has also issued a stark warning that Cordofan could be next and specifically reported on emerging of serious violations in the context of the RSF capture of Barra in North Cordofan. These atrocities might have been prevented. This latest wave of atrocities should mark a turning point. Ongoing investigations by the Fact-Finding Mission are crucial to supporting accountability. We urge all states and the UN to support their work and ensure they have the necessary additional resources to conduct urgent dedicated investigations into these atrocities and identify individuals suspected of committing them. These efforts should also feed into the International Criminal Court investigations. Immediate steps notably by the UN to sanction those most responsible and publicly condemn those providing military support to the RSF, including the United Arab Emirates, are key. Sudanese civilians should be centered in all discussions about responding to ongoing atrocities. Thank you.
Thank you. Amnesty International, please.
Mr. President, we welcome this special session in the context of a conflict devastating for civilians. The world has been shocked by recent events in Al Fashr following the RSF attack. Videos have emerged showing RSF fighters summarily killing and committing other serious abuses against people fleeing the city. This attack was the culmination of RSF's 18-month siege of the city and relentless attacks that triggered famine in the displacement camps in the area. Many civilians, including children, are still trapped in the city and are facing grave danger of further attacks and abuses. The RSF has recently escalated its attacks in the Cordovan region. It seized the town of Barra where it carried out similar killings. Recently, a drone strike reportedly killed at least 40 people at a funeral outside Al Obaid. Besides encircling Al Obaid, the RSF continues to besiege the cities of Kadugli and Babanusa. In May 2024, when the RSF first started sieging Al Fashr, Amnesty and others called on the international community to act urgently to prevent atrocities. Instead, some states, particularly the UAE, have continued to fuel the conflict, supplying weapons and ammunition to the RSF while the rest watched. All states must end the supply of weapons and other military assistance to all parties to the conflict. The UN Security Council must ensure the enforcement of the arms embargo on Darfur and extend it to the rest of the country. The Human Rights Council must provide the Fact-Finding Mission with adequate resources to conduct thorough and comprehensive investigations, identify perpetrators of violence and prepare case files for those responsible for atrocities, including in Al Fashr. All international and regional actors must take concrete actions.
Thank you. ISHR, please.
Thank you, President. This is a joint statement. We welcome the convening of this special session. We urge the Council to ensure urgent investigations and to adopt a resolution mandating the FFM to prepare a report to document atrocities being committed in and around Al Fashr and to share information with the ICC. The FFM must be allocated all necessary resources and support required. Sudan is witnessing grave human rights violations following RSF capture of Al Fashr and Barra. Mass killings, ethnic targeting, deliberate attacks on civilians, forced starvation and widespread sexual and gender-based violence. Civilians attempting to flee have been shot, humanitarian workers killed and entire families wiped out, particularly in Al Fashr, North Darfur, Barra and North Cordofan. The situation has triggered a deepening humanitarian catastrophe. Civilians are facing starvation, mass displacement and total communications blackouts, with women and children bearing the heaviest burden. Humanitarian access remains nearly impossible and aid funding is critically low. Sudanese women defenders face intimidation and high risk of reprisals inside and outside of Sudan, impeding them from publicly engaging with this council. All parties to the conflict must respect international humanitarian law and ensure the safety of civilians, especially women and children. States must demand unimpeded humanitarian access and ensure that it reaches those in need. We call on states to urge the warring parties to ensure an immediate ceasefire allows for safe passage of civilians and humanitarian workers and protection of civilians. Thank you.
Thank you. United Network for the Development of Mauritania. Thank you, sir. The United Network for Development in Mauritania has seen indiscriminate bombing hitting residential areas, leading to mass displacement of people and targeting camps for internally displaced people. Those camps host vulnerable people who already, for more than 500 days, have been subjected to an inhuman siege imposed upon them by an armed militia supported by the United Arab Emirates. Since the very beginning of taking over Al Fashr, the Rapid Support Forces militia has killed 700 civilians, subjected approximately 3,000 to forced disappearance and we still don't know where they are, and executed civilians, the bodies of whom, according to satellite images, are still lying unattended in the streets. The militia also tortured other people allegedly for trying to bring assistance and aid into the country in a clandestine manner. Sir, lastly, we would like to call upon the member states of the council to urge the United Arab Emirates to stop providing arms to the Rapid Support Force, to stop supplying mercenaries to them, to stop supplying munitions to them. Providing justice to the people of Sudan and offering them compensation for what's been done to them is the last opportunity we have to rebuild trust in the international human rights system. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Horrific audio files are emerging from Al Fashr detailing racially motivated attacks, summary executions, mass graves and sexual violence. All this threatens to take more areas imminently by the hand of the RSF. Those responsible continue to act with impunity as they brazenly record themselves committing possible war crimes and crimes against humanity. We are deeply disturbed by the number of RSF fighters who appear to be children. The absence of meaningful military or humanitarian assistance for the people of Al Fashr during the 18-month siege is deeply regrettable. We all knew that there will be repetition of the atrocities of 2003, yet no one protected the civilians. A ceasefire and cessation of all attacks on civilian areas is the first step. We need to hold all people responsible for those crimes accountable. We call for full implementation of arms embargoes and targeted sanctions on those found to be facilitating and fueling the atrocities across Sudan, including the UAE. At the end, we urge the council to fully resource and support the FFM in producing a flash report, also to assess the role of external factors and share relevant information with the ICC to inform its investigation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. International Federation for Human Rights Leaks, please.
The H and its Sudanese member organizations welcome this special session to address the catastrophic situation in and around Al Fashr. Reports from the city, including photo and video evidence shared by RSF members themselves, detail the RSF's systematic campaign of ethnically motivated atrocities, including mass killings, tortures including mass killings, torture, rape, and targeted attacks against civilians fleeing the city. These same atrocities risk being repeated in Kordofan's besieged towns in El Obaid, Kadugli, Babanusa, and Delange, where the RSF blockades, drone strikes, and shelling are killing civilians, whilst SAF reportedly prevents civilians from leaving El Obaid. Continued inaction by the international community will only enable further violations. Just as we have seen, the lack of accountability for earlier crimes has now created the conditions for the current atrocities in Al-Fashir. Independent accountability efforts, such as those of the FFM, are crucial to counter this pervasive impunity. The Council must provide the FFM with adequate resources to urgently investigate and report on violations in Al-Fashir before evidence is lost or destroyed. Their findings cannot just remain in a report, but must then be acted on by the international community, including by expediting existing ICC investigations and advancing inquiries into crimes in Al-Fashir, expanding the UN arms embargo and enforcing with stronger monitoring, including transparent investigations into supply channels linked to the UAE and other countries providing arms to the warring parties, targeted sanctions against those perpetrating and enabling violations, and increased support for Sudanese civil society in their work documenting violations and supporting victims. Thank you.
Thank you. Legal Action Network, please.
Happening in Al-Fashir, the surrounding areas in North Darfur and beyond is not new. It is the outcome of decades of gross impunity. Every moment of inaction, every platitude uttered, is a choice to condone and even encourage that impunity. It is a choice that sides with the perpetrators of this sickening violence. Many survivors from Darfur have testified to us. Let us listen to them. When the city fell, everything became death: the houses, the streets, even the hospitals. I saw them line up men from the Zagawa tribe and shoot them. They beat us, insulted us, and took girls away in cars. We walked for hours among the dead, stepping over bodies of people we knew. They shouted, "You are Zagawa, aren't you?" They raped me. In front of me, they killed a woman. They said, "Either we rape you or we take your daughter." I said, "Rape me, but leave my daughter." So they beat me and raped me. We have hundreds more of these testimonies. They confirm that these acts are neither random nor isolated. They reflect a coordinated, consistent pattern by members of the RSF, clearly constituting war crimes, crimes against humanity, and genocide. Members of this council, how will you ensure that all states and private actors immediately cease all forms of material support, supply of arms that fuel the atrocities committed by RSF in Al-Fashir and across Darfur or face accountability for...
Thank you, sir. Once they took over Al-Fashir, the militia of the Rapid Support Force started to commit massacres which were ethnically motivated. They killed 2,000 people during the first week after they entered the city. Despite the fact that they did accept a humanitarian truce proposed on the 6th of November, they continued to carry out attacks against IDP camps in Al-Fashir, attacking particularly women, subjecting them to sexual violence and using collective rape and other atrocities as a weapon of war. A few days after they took Al-Fashir, the militiamen burnt the bodies of civilians to hide the evidence of their crimes and then celebrated their victory with the remains of the victims in the background. Sir, the El Isqar Relief Foundation would like to emphasize that these appalling attacks against civilians in Al-Fashir will not stop until the members of this council and observer states exert all possible pressure on the UAE to stop financing the militia and stop providing it with military support. We urge the establishment of investigative missions which can get to Al-Fashir to meet the survivors and the families of the victims, and we urge this council to dissuade all other neighboring countries, including Chad and particularly Chad, to become complicit in the conflict in Sudan by providing Emirati arms to the RSF. Thank you. Thank you. Geneva Institute for Human Rights, please. Thank you very much. I am addressing you today on behalf of the Geneva Institute for Human Rights to express our support for the holding of this special session at what is a crucial moment in the armed conflict in Sudan. Sir, this year we're celebrating 30 years of the right to protection. What has happened in Al-Fashir is a demonstration of how the international community has to prove its credibility in fully implementing that principle. We urge the Council to start by strongly condemning the flagrant violations of international human rights law and international humanitarian law committed by the Rapid Support Forces in Al-Fashir and elsewhere. Secondly, we demand an independent international mission of inquiry in Sudan and an urgent report being submitted as soon as possible by it to this council. Thirdly, we urge the UNGA to forward the investigation report when completed to the Security Council so that that body can take whatever measures are necessary. And we would further like to see the mandate of the International Court of Justice expanded to cover the whole of the Sudan. Lastly, we think that silence from this council would be tantamount. Thank you. Thank you very much. International Alliance for Defensive Rights and Freedoms.
It is my honor to deliver this statement on behalf of the Alliance International for Law Defense to us, at Liberty's Idol and the Global Center for the Responsibility to Protect. More than 20 years ago, the world witnessed the horrors of the Darfur genocide. Today, the fall of Al-Fashir has sparked another wave of devastation and atrocity crimes. The city's capture has unleashed attacks against civilians with credible reports that the RSF has killed, raped, abducted, and tortured civilians, frequently targeting them based on ethnic identity. Satellite imaginary and survivor testimonies indicate door-to-door executions and the deliberate destruction of civilian infrastructure. These crimes may amount to war crimes, crimes against humanity and/or acts of genocide. Today's reality underscores the urgent need for decisive international action to protect vulnerable populations. We commend the Human Rights Council for convening today's special session at such a critical moment and thank defense defenders for their vital role in mobilizing civil society. We call the Human Rights Council to support the resolution before you and request the fact-finding mission to investigate violations in and around Al-Fashir, including the role of external actors, and provide actionable recommendations. Every government and the institution has the responsibility to protect. We call upon the member states...
Thank you. Next speaker, International Institute for Rights and Development.
Mr. President, as RSF fighters shoot civilians on air, rape women publicly, and as people survive famine by eating leaves, the world still glorifies the UAE as a global hub. It is not only reason we have lost, perhaps it's our humanity. A satellite image continued to show bloodstained land and scattered bodies what UN experts call Rwanda-level genocide and unmatched barbarity. Emirati support for the RSF has been documented through networks across Libya, Chad, Uganda, and Somalia. Leaked UN documents revealed Emirati passports on an RSF-linked crashed plane, while Amnesty trusts Emirati transfers of Chinese weapons into Darfur. UN experts tracked radar-eviding Emirati flights landing in Chad, forming a regional air bridge. Middle East Eye reported the Emirati use of Besasso Airport to transit Colombian mercenaries and over 500,000 containers marked as hazardous to Sudan. Mr. President, there is a clear link between RSF-controlled zones and resource-rich areas, especially gold mines vital to the UAE. $13 billion worth of Sudan gold is smuggled to the Emirates. Hamdeti's network and family company facilitate this trade, with the UAE-based brother overseeing operations and Hamdeti wealth reaching $7 billion in 2023.
Thank you. Africa Culture Internationale. Thank you, sir. Women and children are the victims of systematic sexual violence committed by members of the RSF and its allies in Sudan. They are being kidnapped and subject to forced detention in Darfur, in Khartoum, and in other areas. Children are being recruited by force into fighting militias. And the report from the United Nations Secretary General on children in armed conflict is documented. The practice is being used for that. Human Rights Watch has confirmed the forced recruitment of children in Jebel Mara and in Darfur. The war reached by the Sudanese armed forces has displaced over 14,000 people by force, and as a result of military blockades, the destruction of schools and hospitals is followed as Al Jazeera and others have documented war crimes are being committed. The armed forces of Sudan and the Sudanese liberation movement also continue to place obstacles in the way of delivery of aid and targets international aid depots in flagrant violation of international humanitarian law. The continuation of these crimes by the Sudanese armed forces and allied militia means that we have to speak out, condemn what's happening, and ensure effective protection of civilians. Thank you. Thank you. Partners for Transparency is next. Thank you, sir. Our organization would like to put on record its enormous concern about the flagrant human rights violations committed in the city of Al-Fashir by the RSF. Since the end of October, we've seen extrajudicial executions, torture, forced disappearances, and the bombing of civilian areas and residential districts, as well as the displacement of 70-odd thousand people. All this is a flagrant violation of the basic right to life. The delivery of humanitarian aid is being impeded, and the RSF is even attacking shelters. We know they've carried out sexual atrocities, including gang rape. Many people were killed in the Saudi maternity hospital when it was attacked by the RSF on the 28th of October. At least 25 women and girls have been subjected to collective rapes in the shelters around the University of Al-Fashir. We demand strongest possible condemnation of all these abuses and atrocities and demand the establishment of an independent international mission to investigate what has been done in Al-Fashir and to consider the involvement of the United Arab Emirates in the provision of militia and munitions and arms to the RSF through Libya. Thank you. Thank you. Interfaith International.
Faith International expresses its deep concern over the escalating violence and the grave human rights violations in and around Al-Fashir. The destruction of places of worship, including mosques and churches, the targeting of civilians, and the spread of extremism and hate-based narratives are deeply alarming. Acts of racial and ethnic discrimination must end immediately. We call on parties to respect the ceasefire and to open safe corridors for humanitarian access to civilians in need. The ongoing destruction of infrastructure, hospitals, residential areas, as well as reports of rape and indiscriminating bombing constitute war crimes and crimes against humanity. Those responsible must be held accountable. Our organization firmly believes there is no military solution to the Sudan crisis. We support diplomatic and political negotiations aimed at achieving a sustainable civilian-led transition that can build democratic institutions and end the culture of impunity. We thank the Council for convening this special session and urge the international community to act decisively to protect civilians and to support efforts for peace, justice, reconciliation in Sudan. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. African Center for Democracy and Human Rights Studies, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The African Center condemns atrocities committed in Al-Fashir since its fall to the RSF after 18-month deadly siege, where beleaguered residents were forced to eat animal food to survive. Any aggression against civilians and non-compartents alike is a crime abhorrent to Islamic faith and all canons of civilized life. The perpetrators must be brought to justice. In this regard, we note the arrest of an RSF-filled commander. However, the magnitude of the atrocities commands more action to hold those responsible accountable. We draw attention of the Council to the ethnic cleansing currently taking place in Khartoum, where the security forces randomly arrest and summarily execute innocent civilians because of their ethnic or regional origins. A campaign of forced evictions and selective demolition of whole residential areas inhabited by displaced people mainly from Darfur and Kordofan is taking place in the environs of Khartoum, and thousands of victims of this inhuman campaign, including whole families, are left without shelter. The army's rejection of all attempts to end the armed conflict, suru negotiated settlement, is aggravating the humanitarian situation. Such intransigence is behind the failure of the indirect talk held in Washington, DC, last month. It is our belief that what happened in Al-Fashir was preventable had the army agreed to assist fair arrangement for humanitarian purpose during the Washington talks.
Thank you. Al-Gora Community Development Association, please.
President, Al-Gora Community Development Association expresses its deepest concern and strong condemnation of the horrific violations being committed against civilians in Al-Fashir, the capital of North Darfur. The ongoing killings, shelling, and starvation, together with the denial of medical and humanitarian access, represent grave breaches of international humanitarian and human rights law. We call upon Sudanese leaders and the international community to act urgently to end these atrocities, protect civilians, and ensure safe and unhindered humanitarian access. Reason and inanity must prevail to stop the bloodshed and preserve Sudan's national cohesion and dignity. We urge this council and the international community to uphold their moral and legal responsibilities to stop the violations and deliver immediate humanitarian relief to the people of Sudan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. 22 years after the genocide in Darfur, the international community is still sitting on its hands watching a new cycle of ethnic cleansing in Sudan. Carpet bombing, destruction of hospital infrastructure, of aid stocks, extrajudicial executions, and depriving people of aid through humanitarian corridors are war crimes as far as we're concerned and crimes against humanity. We demand technical and financial support to the International Commission of Inquiry so that it can fully discharge its mandate. We also demand that all the belligerents involved in these human rights and human rights international law violations appear before international courts. We urge the creation of a sustainable ceasefire and a political and diplomatic solution to this conflict. This is the only way of ensuring real credible protection for civilians and helping the Sudanese people to realize their dreams. We urge all the parties in the conflict to protect civilians in line with international human rights law and international humanitarian law and in line with the relevant UN resolutions. We reiterate our support for and solidarity with the Sudanese people. Thank you. Thank you. Forum for Development and Human Rights Dialogue.
Distinguished delegates, our organization, which is based in Egypt, would like to express its deep concern over the continuous deterioration of the humanitarian and security situation in Sudan since the outbreak of the armed conflict in April 2023. This has caused increasing suffering among the civilians and poses a serious threat to the stability and unity of the state. We reaffirm our support for the sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity of the Republic of Sudan, including the importance of preserving the state's legitimate institutions. They are the main safeguard for protecting citizens and maintaining public order and stability. We urge all parties to fully comply with the international humanitarian law and ensure the protection of civilians and vital infrastructure. We strongly condemn all grave human rights violations and war crimes committed against civilians in Darfur and other regions. We stress the need for accountability and an end to impunity for all perpetrators. We also call upon regional and international actors that provide forms of support or political cover to armed groups operating outside the frame of the state, including the RSF, to seize all actions that undermine stability and peace within Sudan. And we call upon them to respect the international legitimacy and principles of Sudan's unity and sovereignty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is the Mauna Association for Human Rights and Immigration.
Thank you. We express our profound alarm regarding the catastrophic and escalating crisis in Sudan. Credible reports confirm widespread systemic mass atrocities and grave violation of international law. We condemn the indiscriminate attack on civilians and civilian objectives. We condemn the indiscriminate attack on civilians and civilian objectives. These actions violate the principle of distinction, proportionality, and the duty to take all feasible measures to minimize harms to civilians. We cite alarming reports of extrajudicial killing, forced displacement, and systemic use of conflict-related sexual violence, acts which may constitute war crimes and crimes against humanity. We are also concerned by reports regarding the alleged involvement of external actors in providing support to the parties engaged in hostilities. These actions prolong the violence, violate international lawlessness, and render external actors complicit in these atrocities. We demand an immediate cessation of hostilities and robust protection for civilians. The depleted impunity must be broken by ensuring all perpetrators are held accountable through credible, independent mechanisms. We urge full cooperation with the UN Fact-Finding Missions to secure the full realization of human rights for all affected people. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last statement that we can accommodate. I've been informed that some delegations have requested the possibility of exercising their right to reply, and I start by giving the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Arab Emirates. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. My country has asked for the right to reply as a representative that is a concerned party. The Sudanese Armed Forces are trying to get back all possible venues in order to forget about the violations that you have wrongly accused us of doing, instead of putting an end to the war that has been ignited. Now, all the campaigns are being launched in order to distort our image, and this is an attempt to put an obstacle to all these efforts. We would like to say that all reports have been documenting the violations of human rights and international humanitarian law by the Sudanese Armed Forces. The Sudanese Armed Forces have turned down a piece despite of the major efforts played by the Quad and the United States. With the support of our country, this would have prevented the latest escalation in Al Fashir region and would have allowed access to humanitarian aid. The United Arab Emirates would support all the calls that call for an immediate ceasefire, and we call upon all parties to the conflict to respect their humanitarian and legal obligations and put the interests of the Sudanese people first, because the people are the ones that pay the price of this atrocious and absurd war. The United Arab Emirates would like to reiterate its commitment to collaborating with its international and regional partners, including the Quad, in order to launch a transitional process that will pave the way for the establishment of an independent government that will not be under the control of warring parties. Mr. President, those who are pretending that they have helped build the glory of other countries, they have to look at what they are doing, and they have to consecrate their efforts to building their country instead of perpetrating lies. At the end, the nations are not built upon destruction, they are built based on peace and dialogue. We shall not forget that the Port Sudan Authority is a party that is trying to get the sympathy of the world, but it is the same party that has made atrocities in Darfur 20 years ago, and it has also taken the power over the authorities that were elected in 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The distinguished representative of Chad. Thank you very much, Chairman. Chairman, we firmly reject the allegations made against us by some non-governmental organizations which have suggested that we are making it easier to deliver weaponry Chad has a border with Sudan which is 1,300 kilometers long, and that means that we are also suffering from the consequences of the armed conflict in that country. We've got security problems, financial issues, economic problems, enormous, all of them being exacerbated by this. Hundreds of thousands of Sudanese refugees, and we think the total at the moment is now over a million, have fled into Chad. They've settled in our country, and the numbers are growing by the day, literally by the We were already facing massive humanitarian challenges, now we have another one. Our people show exemplary solidarity and hospitality in welcoming the Sudanese cousins into Chad, but that is being seriously tested, and we need international cooperation and solidarity if we're going to actually be able to meet properly what is a very heavy responsibility. Crisis situations in our neighbors mean that we are a subsidiary victim of those conflicts. We are under considerable pressure in humanitarian terms because of this. We want to see a negotiated political solution to this conflict to be reached by all Sudanese working together. Dialogue is what we want to see to bring that about, and we will be only too happy to cooperate with all the Human Rights Council mechanisms in existence if it will help to improve the human rights situation in Sudan and protect civilians, and help to deal with all the other issues we need to tackle if we're going to have full respect for international human rights and international humanitarian law. In conclusion, Chad is not, I repeat, not involved in any of the actions accusations of which have been levered against us. We are neutral in terms of the conflict in Sudan, and we want to have peace talks to bring that conflict to an end. We have to see a renewal of negotiations to move towards a lasting ceasefire, and above all, a lasting political settlement, because we're not going to have peace in Sudan unless we do that. And without peace in Sudan, Chad's under threat as well. Thank you. Thank you. I see no further requests for the floor. In that case, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we should take a very, very brief technical break before we examine the draft resolution. Thank you.
Your Excellencies, distinguished colleagues, we will follow the usual procedure as was the case in previous sessions of the Human Rights Council. I would like to recall the key points. The voting process is only possible for member states of the council. Observer states will only be able to intervene in two cases: when they introduce a draft resolution or decision, or when they are directly concerned by that draft resolution or decision. Aside from those situations, observer states will not be able to take the floor even on a point of order. All procedural motions, such as amendments, must be announced during the general comments segment. If a procedural motion is raised once the vote has begun, it will consider it to be inadmissible. I'd also like to recall that in line with Article 128 of the General Assembly Rules of Procedure, the author of proposal or amendment will not be able to explain its vote on the proposal or amendment. And lastly, may I recall that during the vote, the speaking time is limited to three minutes. We will now proceed with the consideration of the draft resolution. This is Resolution A/ HRC/ S38L1 entitled The Human Rights Situation in and Around El Fasher in the Context of the Ongoing Conflict in the Sudan. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom to introduce the draft resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I deliver this statement on behalf of the Sudan Core Group consisting of Germany, Ireland, the Netherlands, Norway, and the United Kingdom. We requested this session because the scale and severity of the crisis in Sudan can no longer be met with silence. The situation in El Fasher is the latest example of a broader collapse: a collapse of the rule of law, protection of civilians, and human dignity. As we have heard from so many speakers today, what we are witnessing is not just a humanitarian emergency but a systematic assault on civilians with consequences that extend far beyond Sudan's borders. The violence in El Fasher bears the hallmarks of a coordinated campaign against civilians by the Rapid Support Forces. Their advance has been accompanied by credible reports of ethnically targeted killings, systematic sexual violence, and the deliberate use of starvation. Across Sudan, over 30 million people now require humanitarian assistance, and yet access to aid is obstructed, and those who try to help are themselves at risk, as we have seen with the appalling targeting of health workers in El Fasher. The scale of need is staggering, but the response has been inadequate. This council must not look away. I hope we could all agree on the need for accountability as well as the end goal of reconciliation. We need an independent account of the past to achieve both these goals. There is no other independent mechanism to achieve that goal. The key outcome of this resolution is the urgent inquiry to be carried out by the UN Fact-Finding Mission. Its efforts to document and preserve evidence of violations, abuses lay the groundwork for justice. Without it, accountability will remain out of reach, and the cycle of impunity will continue. We also pay tribute to the Sudanese civil society actors who continue to serve their communities under extraordinary pressure. Their courage and resilience are a reminder of the values this council is meant to uphold. Mr. President, the strongest tribute that we can all make to their courage is by adopting today's resolution by consensus. Let us send a clear signal that the people of Sudan are not forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you. The Secretariat has informed me that there are 30 additional cosponsors to the draft resolution. I now go the floor to the members of the council who wish to make general comments on the draft resolution as presented. Are there any requests for the floor? I see none. I've also been told that Sudan will not take the floor at this point in time as a concerned country. Is that the case? The Secretariat has informed me that this will have a bearing on the programme and budget and as presented, and I give the floor to the representative of the Secretariat. We will now take action on draft Resolution A/ HRC/ S38L1 as presented, and I give the floor to members of the council who wish to explain their vote before the vote. I call upon the distinguished representative of Sudan. Thank you, President. Sir, we wish to express our thanks to all states and all organizations who have condemned the actions carried out by the terrorist militia and the state sponsoring it, that is, the UAE. We would like to extend our thanks to countries who have worked with us to amend the draft resolution during consultations pertaining to this text. We also thank those who drafted this draft resolution because they've taken into consideration our observations. We also wish to thank the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights for the work in documenting these atrocities. As regards the draft resolution, some paragraphs are positive and warrant acceptance. And we would mention, for instance, paragraphs that condemn the activities carried out by the militia and extrajudicial executions, arbitrary detention of civilians, and the recruitment of children as well as rape as weapons of war and other forms of violence. We very much appreciate the paragraphs that have restated this council's commitment to respect the sovereignty of Sudan, its territorial integrity as well. We are in agreement with the paragraph which refuses to introduce a parallel force or authority in zones and areas that are controlled by the support forces. We will not go against this draft text. However, we reject a number of paragraphs, and we would like this to be reflected in the records of this session. I'll start out by the preamble, and I'll look at paragraphs 11 and 12 of the preamble. Paragraph 11 talks about the fact-finding mission, and paragraph 13 talks about the states who support the militia without naming the state. You have seen the position of the international community. There have been demonstrations throughout the world condemning the United Arab Emirates. We have seen all of this, even in the parliaments and public spaces, to condemn the United Arab Emirates. I'd now like to turn to the paragraph 14, 15, 16, 17. All of these paragraphs relate to the fact-finding mission. Our stance as regards this mission and the resolution which has established this mission is very clear-cut. Once again, we feel that these paragraphs that we are rejecting should be mentioned in the records of this session.
Rassad, you have three minutes. Please come to the end of your statement.
Thank you very much indeed, President. As regards the humanitarian situation as mentioned in the draft resolution, we would like to thank those who have mentioned the causes for this humanitarian situation. The state sponsoring militia should be reminded that you take responsibility for the blood shed in Sudan. Demonstrations across the world have condemned this, and that, we believe, is sufficient. We would like to see that the international community will condemn you and bring you to justice. Thank you, sir. Thank you. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Colombia. Thank you, sir. Assistance between human beings is what has given us power as mankind. Recently, during the meeting in Cairo, our president Gustavo Pérez has expressed Colombia's solidarity and announced the sending of humanitarian aid through the body to address two genocides that are unfolding across the world in Gaza and Sudan. Colombia has supported the convening of this special session of the Human Rights Council because of our consternation at the atrocities committed by the Rapid Support Forces in Al Fasher and in the regions of Darfur and Cordofan, with the participation of foreign mercenaries, participation that we have rejected in several sessions and panels of this council. It is relevant to point out that in the draft resolution, reference is made to these atrocities, including the assassination of civilians, women, young girls and boys, as well as indiscriminate attacks on civil infrastructure, or the assassination of humanitarian and medical staff. At this special session, we would like to restate that Colombia stands beside the victims, and that our message is one of peace and respect for human rights and international humanitarian law. That is why we will vote in favor of the draft resolution if there is a call for a vote. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. I call upon the distinguished representative of China.
Mr. President, China firmly supports Sudan's sovereignty, unity, and territorial integrity. We also support the efforts made by the government in promoting political process and safeguard national security. We also support Sudan to find their own ways that fits their national circumstances and people's needs to resolve the situation. We reject any imposed external solutions or country-specific human rights mechanisms. China has noted that the draft resolution condemns violations of international humanitarian law and violation of human rights in and around El Fasher, calls for immediate and complete ceasefire, and adopt action to release humanitarian situation, protect human rights. However, the draft resolution is not balanced in content and does not take into consideration of the concerns of related country. It has mentioned and also expanded the mandate of the fact-finding mission. Based on the -- given the above and underpinned by our principle, China constructively participates in the consultation of the resolution. We have requested a more balanced text. In this regard, China will not join the consensus on this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Microphone for China.
I would like to repeat, China will not join the consensus on the paragraph on fact-finding mission in the draft resolution. China will disassociate on relevant paragraphs on fact-finding missions in the resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I call upon the distinguished representative of Kuwait. Thank you, President. President, we would like to express our thanks to the groups who have drafted this draft resolution and for the consultations that have taken place. This draft contains important paragraphs which reflect the humanitarian situation in Al Fasher. This text condemns the actions of the Rapid Support Forces, and we do hope that this draft resolution will alleviate the suffering of victims. We welcome the fact that Sudan has joined the consensus. We condemn the flagrant and grave attacks conducted by the Rapid Support Forces in El Fasher and in the surrounding areas. We restate the importance of providing humanitarian assistance and the importance to uphold international humanitarian law. By way of conclusion, our position is very clear. We need to put an immediate end to the violence and ensure that dialogue prevails so as to achieve peace and stability in Sudan. I thank you. Thank you. I call upon the distinguished representative of Qatar. Thank you, President. It is an honor for me to take the floor to make a number of comments on the draft resolution. I would like to thank the groups who have facilitated consultations on this text. We very clearly condemn any violation and all crimes perpetrated by the Rapid Support Forces in El Fasher. There must be an investigation. There will have to be an independent follow-up as regards what happened, so as to bring the perpetrators to justice. Such atrocities must be prevented in future. The Core Group has taken account of several comments and remarks made during informal consultations, so as to achieve a text which garners consensus. We note the role of the Office of the High Commissioner in Sudan, so as to inform the council about what is happening in El Fasher. We know that the Sudanese government collaborates with the OHCHR in Sudan. This will enable the officials of the office to reach out to the areas where the victims are and to glean firsthand information. We very much welcome Sudan's collaboration on this text, and we hope that we will be able to reach a consensus so as to improve the human rights situation in Sudan. I thank you. Thank you. I'd like to call upon the distinguished representative of Ethiopia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ethiopia joins consensus on this resolution in light of the gravity of the humanitarian and human rights situation in and around El Fasher, and out of solidarity with the people of Sudan. At the same time, Ethiopia wishes to formally disassociate itself with operative paragraphs 14, 15, and 16, as well as all other references to the fact-finding mission. Ethiopia has consistently maintained that creating or expanding international investigative mechanisms without the consent of the country concerned is neither constructive nor conducive to a sustainable solution. We continue to hold the view that the African Union and IGAD remain the central and legitimate actors in supporting Sudan towards peace, dialogue, and accountability. We request that the statement be reflected in the records of the session of the council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Ghana, please.
Mr. President, Ghana maintains that finding agreement on recommendations for setting up institutions or expanding the mandates of existing mechanisms are a central pillar of the human rights architecture and a necessary condition for safeguarding the utility, relevance, and value of the Human Rights Council. Ghana acknowledges the genuine concerns of the Sudanese authorities and believes that those concerns are valid. However, having closely followed the recent happenings in El Fasher, Ghana is of the considered opinion that the council needs to evolve a new approach on Sudan that narrows the scope of divergence in a constructive, fair, and impartial manner. We wish to stress the importance of accepting the principles, modalities, and mechanisms of the international human rights system, which in this particular situation are not mutually exclusive. We remain convinced that in situations of systemic, widespread, and awful human rights violations or abuses, the international community must exercise its duty in a fair and impartial manner to assist the country concerned to protect its citizens. Mr. President, we must use all the existing mechanisms on the Sudan to address the human rights situation in the country, gathered by the principle of complementarity. At this crucial time, a unified voice of the council in support of accountability measures is necessary to send a strong message to would-be perpetrators of atrocity crimes that their actions will not go unpunished. It is for these reasons that Ghana will join consensus. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ghana. Is there a request for a vote? I don't see one. May I take it, then, that the draft proposal, S38/1, as presented, can be adopted without a vote? It is so decided. Thank you. You will find the information on the implication for the programme budget on the extranet. With that, I'm going to move to explanations of vote and general comments after the vote on the text which has just been adopted. Is there any delegation seeking the floor? Distinguished representative of Sudan, please. Thank you very much, sir. We said clearly that we reject certain paragraphs of the draft resolution. And that is an opinion also shared by several fraternal countries for whose support we are grateful. Let me recall one or two essential points, however. On the humanitarian situation in Sudan, let me remind you of the situation there. We are always trying to get humanitarian aid in quickly and distributed to every region of Sudan, including those which are at the moment under the control of terrorist militias. A Sudanese is a Sudanese. All parts of Sudan are Sudan. On justice and impunity of those who have perpetrated human rights violations, we operate the complementarity principle, and on the basis of it, we cooperate with all human rights mechanisms. We shall continue to cooperate and coordinate with them, and that starts with the regional human rights office and all the subsidiary bodies thereof, and each and every party working to restore human rights in Sudan. We also cooperate with the Security Council experts. In accordance with Resolution 1591, we have national mechanisms in every region in the country who are working on human rights issues, and to cooperate as part of that with the relevant international organizations dealing with justice for victims of violations and the problem of impunity for those who perpetrate them. Thank you. Thank you very much. I call on the distinguished delegation of Cuba. Thank you very much, sir. The Cuban delegation has joined the consensus on the understanding that this resolution has the support of the state concerned. Nonetheless, and having said that, we regret that attempts are being made to use this situation to legitimize and expand the mandate of what we believe is a biased investigative mechanism, the creation of which Cuba did not support. This is part of efforts to politicize and manipulate this Human Rights Council rather than using it for a discussion body, the purpose of which is to seek balanced, reasonable to seek balanced, reasonable agreements which make it possible to fully protect everybody's human rights. Because of this and taking into account our position of principle on all the paragraphs in the resolution related to the investigative or fact-finding mission on those Cuba disassociates from the consensus. Thank you. Thank you very much, Cuba. That exhausts the list of speakers for explanations of vote and general comments after the vote and concludes action on the draft resolution. Your Excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to an end of this special session. Before I declare the session closed, I should like to remind you that the report of the 38th Special Session is currently in the process of being finalized and it will soon be available on the Council extranet. May I also take the opportunity to remind you that delegations will have the possibility of submitting their comments over the next two weeks once the report has been distributed to the Secretariat of the Council. May I take it that the Council decides to adopt the draft report of the 38th Special Session of the Human Rights Council at referendum? I see no objections. So decided, thank you. Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Thank you to the interpretation team whose flexibility made it possible for us to conclude this special session this morning. And I declare the 38th Special Session of the UN Human Rights Council closed. Thank you.